November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number two is public participation. Anyone from the public that would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, because the one person who could is actually probably here for item number four, so we'll get to you very soon. Actually, we may yield. Mr. Foot, we're at public participation. Did you have anything tonight? Okay, great. We just closed it, didn't want to leave you out, so. Sure, of course you can. Yeah. First name, name and address, please.
Rick Foot, one twenty-nine Indian Rock Road.
Thank you.
Question is about, last meeting we were talking about high school parking.
Yes.
And, you know, some of the parents here are like, oh, my child this and my child that and all that. So a question about you said the number of passes that were given out, or three hundred and some odd passes or something were given out for parking. It's like my brother's on the Bedford School Board, so I talk to him all the time about what they do and everything. And he mentioned a couple of things. One thing is about what it costs. He says Bedford, their cost is a hundred and twenty-five or something like that. And he says, well, we actively try to discourage the students by charging them a lot more for driving since that helps us in the long run if they're not driving. A good point, okay. And then the other one was about the parking and general number of spots that when I wander by in the morning, I usually wander by about seven-thirty-ish in the mornings, I frequently walk. I always noticed that as far as spots, there's always a whole, when you mentioned spots that are like always open. There was a little small parking lot, the first one near next to the emergency exit of the highway that's got dozen spots in it. The next main spot parking lot that's got like sixty spots in it. That one seems like it never has more than about fifteen cars in it. It's like all those passes, all those spots are taken up too, and no one ever fills or drives to fill them up. It's like, wow. It's pretty amazing that kids would pay for that and not, never actually drive to fill those spots. So it's like, hmm, people are worried about parking out in the dirt there, but then those spots are never taken up. So I was kind of curious if there's actually, those spots are part of the, the number of passes given out or are those just kind of left open for some other reason, I guess.
And I think they discussed it last meeting. We don't really dialogue during public participation, but at last meeting we discussed that the, the spots and the passes are aligned. So it's, it's just a student may not have had their car that day or something.
Wow, a lot of students don't drive, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. So we will close public participation and we'll go on to item number three, which is the School District Capital Improvement Plan with Matt.
Okay, last time we met, we were presented with Tom Tussell, the capital improvement program that was run past the School District Planning and Building Committee with a couple of changes. I gave you a, a new sheet. It's at your place. It says in the upper right-hand corner, revised in today's date, because we were minus a price for a particular item. And that item is under the twenty-one, twenty-two column. The last item, the lighting retrofit, we have a price, an estimate of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to do LED lighting at Master Cola Elementary School and Master Cola Upper Elementary School. But everything here currently on the sheet, which is the roofing, the master plan study, the campus, the SAU construction, bleacher upgrades, gym floor replacement, boilers, windows, turf field and lighting retrofit, as, it's the same as was published, so. It's just here again for your consideration.
Thank you, Matt. And we did go through the, through the capital improvement plan last time. And at this point, for the second review, if there are any adjustments we want to make based on what was presented to us that was reviewed by the Planning and Building Committee, this would be our time to do it. I did have one question though, Matt, and I think, I don't think the one hundred and thirty-five thousand was there for JMU's APR gym floor replacement? That's what I thought you were going to get me with. And VC Tier Wood, does that hundred and thirty-five thousand cover either material?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So with that, are there any, was there? Okay. And I'm not even among my readers tonight, and I caught it, so. On that note, Andy?
Yeah, I have moments like that. Was it there? No, it wasn't there. I didn't think it was there. So my question is, and I brought this up briefly last time. One of the things that's not on the CIP that I want to talk to the board and get the, the reading is whether the money to bring down Brentwood should be in this plan or not for, for this coming budget year. I know there was just some discussion about whether, when you come and you actually look at doing the, the actual reconstruction of the campus, whether you plan on taking down the building as part of that funding activity. But I know that there's been talk amongst people in different boards and even here that if we take that building down sooner, we save the forty thousand-ish or so that we spend per year to keep that building functional as far as heat and all that kind of stuff. So I'd like to entertain a discussion really quickly about whether we want to put two hundred thousand dollars or whatever estimate that Matt would give us to tear down that building in two thousand twenty-one in parallel with the planning for the new one. So I'd like to just get people's thoughts.
So I see Naomi's hand. I'll let you weigh in first.
As part of that, if I remember correctly, the numbers for maintaining the building last year were estimates that were given from numbers pre-purchase.
From Searl's, yes.
Right. Do we, I'd be curious to know if we have any more accurate sense of what it actually costs us to keep that building up.
Not off the top of my head, no. I don't, I don't. I know it didn't exceed the forty thousand dollars because we ran it at a minimal, all the lights weren't on. It was, it was minimal use, so that would be something I'd have to take a look at.
Cindy?
I would say that I have some concerns with taking it down before we actually have a plan that we are committed to going forward with. So I think it's likely we will take it down, and I would be open to a discussion about it. But I just feel like until that plan is agreed on, agreed upon by the Planning and Building Committee, I'm not necessarily in favor of taking it down.
Okay, I will let Andy go and then Naomi.
Well, just to give you a little piece of information, to a person on the Planning and Building Committee, they want it down yesterday. If you were to talk to them, the, they, as a matter of fact, they wanted us to see if we could find money this year to take it down. So if you were to poll that audience, you'd have a very clear answer. Just, I don't know if that influences you at all, but that's, would be their viewpoint.
Naomi?
So I support this, not because I think it should come down today, but because a year is a long time before we get to reallocate funds. And I'd like us to have the flexibility, if during the course of this year, we decide that it is coming down, to not wait until yet another budget cycle. I don't think that I'd necessarily want to approve pulling it down at the moment. There's a lot more work that has to be done before that. But it would be nice to have that flexibility going into this, this fiscal year.
Cindy?
To keep options open, I would approve. I would be in support of that.
Brandy, are you feeling it? I felt you on the, on the fence. There you go. Go for it.
I'm good with options being open. I just, I think it is, I'd like to see what you were referencing about how much it does cost to maintain the building, what it would cost to have it get tore down, torn down. And then what the, I'm stuck mainly because I don't know moving forward, what the new plan would look like and the reality of that, the scope of it. So I, I am on the fence only because I don't feel like I have enough information at this time to say either way.
I have a question that I'm going to put Matt on the spot, and it's not a legally binding answer, I promise. And that is, do you feel that the raising of the, the red building, if that's the, what the board elects to do or the plan designs it to do, would exceed a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have an estimate about how much? And I'm just, again, not legally binding.
Yeah, I do, I do, I do have an estimate. We have, in the budget you haven't seen yet, we have still carried the forty thousand dollar figure for utilities. I just, you can read the little spreadsheet on my phone. I just added it up real quick and that, that's pretty much what it came out to. And we also have a hundred and, we've also, in the budget you haven't seen, have a hundred and twenty-five thousand in there. So the total would be approximately one sixty-five. We figured that we'd start off with the one twenty-five in the budget. And if you choose to tear it down, it would, we would grab the utilities and then we would pair it with the one twenty-five to give us a hundred and sixty-five to tear the building down. And if not, you could just take the one twenty-five and leave the forty in or whatever the adjusted number would be. But approximately right now, I've got three good estimates that include the removal of the asbestos that are running into the around a hundred and sixty to a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar range.
And asbestos drives that number up, I can only imagine.
Correct, yes.
So, very specialized. So with that, Andy, are you proposing to add a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the capital improvement plan if it's already?
Well, the only question is, this is one of those, we're anticipating what the budget will be like when it comes to us. And I don't know what's cleaner from a budget perspective, if we put the actual amount in the CIP that we would take and then the extra money that would be in the budget already. The trouble is you'd have to then bring in, if you put a hundred and sixty-five and then the forty, you'd have a little over two hundred thousand into the budget of which you know that you would either give back a hundred and sixty-five if you didn't do it, or forty if you did.
To clarify, I think it's a hundred and twenty-five, so.
Right, but a hundred and twenty. Right, but what I'm saying is, from a budgeting perspective, in this CI, in the CIP, does the line item be just the delta or is it the full amount to be clean?
The, the CIP is, even though it does say expenditure summary form, it's not necessarily, you know, what you're going to have in your operating budget. It's an estimate of the value of the, of the operation or building or task that you're going to do. So you would put the gross cost of the operation in there, which would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand, regardless how it's funded in the operating budget or by warrant article. Who knows?
So this has a hundred and sixty-five thousand in it, but when you actually do the budget, it would be, that hundred and sixty-five would be, include the forty thousand that you would do for the utility piece?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay.
So it's a hundred and twenty-five for the, in there right now, plus the utilities of forty. So if you chose to tear the building down, we don't need the utilities. You could zero the utility line out and transfer them to the teardown of the Brentwood.
Because it's all in the maintenance.
Because it's all in the maintenance budget anyway.
So that, what that means is.
Okay, finish your thought.
Oh, no, no, she was pointing, it was like. Oh, oh, discreet, it was, I was seeing it perfectly. So what that means is, is that we as a board, if we do approve this, we have to make sure that we don't do something silly like take the forty thousand out of the operating budget to just try to save money or something like that.
Correct. Well, I wouldn't call it silly. I would just call it, you know, a strategy that would not work correctly. Unintended consequences, thank you.
Okay. Naomi?
Let me put it this way, just because I'm, I'm curious about this now too. If we were to add it to the CIP, would it complicate your creation of the budget for this year?
No, not at all.
Okay.
It would, it would actually clarify because the board's making a stance on something that we're putting together right now. So we could take those utility lines, perhaps, and before it gets to you, clear them out and put a hundred and sixty-five in the Brentwood line. Would be actually helpful.
Okay. So Andy, are you about to make a motion?
So, in the spirit of reinforcing the statement that we made when we purchased that property, that it was the land that we were procuring, I'd like to make a motion that we add to this, align to the CIP that is called the Brentwood Tear Down or whatever words that we think are appropriate for budget year two thousand twenty-one in the amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Seconded by Naomi. Did you want to speak to your motion and then, you have first right?
I think we've talked about it.
That's fine, fair. Brandy?
So, my concern is that, from my understanding, it will cost a hundred and sixty-five thousand all in to remove the building. But, once the building's gone, we need, I'm assuming, additional funds to do something with that property. It can't, meaning grass, some semblance of not having a hole right there. So, will that one sixty-five be enough to cover a preliminary process to make it look somewhat appealing to the eyes of driving it?
Unless you wanted to put in a swimming pool for the high school swim teams, we, in that hundred.
I'm sorry.
Is a hundred and sixty-five good?
Yeah, the, the hundred and sixty-five includes the removal, complete removal of all the concrete, everything underground, and the backfill of that space, the hole, with good compacted gravel that would leave you with a nice, clean, level site for any kind of pad you wanted to put there, if you wanted to do a, a parking lot or anything like that.
So it does cover enough? It's not just the removal of the building, but also? Okay, just making sure because I'm thinking, is that going to be enough? And if not, now's the time to have that discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Mark?
And then, just to state the obvious, the other part of this is that we, we are promoting the idea of a master plan study and the SIP and the redesign that would include, you know, a discovery and a plan about what to do with, with that site as well. So the project would be, as Matt said, to clear it all out and make it, make it, you know, just be like it was never there. And then the study that's going to be conducted is going to determine, you know, whether that's, how, how that would best be used. So it's kind of a one-two punch. So, you know, just because that building is gone doesn't mean that we, you know, we're not going to repurpose that space for parking or for, you know, some other, whatever, that's the point of the plan. So I know that everybody knows that. I just wanted to say that's like step one, and then there's step two, which is kind of that master plan review of the whole campus, so.
Okay. So there's a motion. Is there any other comment on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adding a hundred and sixty-five, actually, I'm going to make one quick comment to it. With that, it's going to bring the two thousand, the twenty-two thousand, twenty-two one total line to one million, two hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and five dollars for capital improvements. So I want to just add that footnote. Cindy?
I had a comment, just a brief one. I, I think Andy has said at the beginning of his motion about saying, the school board saying it was just about the land when we bought it, and I don't think that that's true. I recall, we didn't know what was going to be done with it, and it was to open up options. So I just wanted to clarify that. It wasn't until later on that we, I think, felt the stronger sense of the land piece of it.
Sure, of course. So I went back and I looked at what I said when we were trying to do this. And it was largely talking about the land and, and we used the building as reference so people knew where it was. And we talked about if feasible to utilize a building, this is what we could use it for. But we didn't know. You're right, we didn't understand that. So I think that I tried to enforce during, before that vote with the taxpayers, about a year, year and a half ago, whenever it was, that it was really about the land and the building was a potential option. But it wasn't, if I was doing it on the building, I don't know what we would have done if we wanted to use that. I don't think that was fully the intent, but.
No, that, that helps with that context. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? And thank you for indulging. I had to get my reading glasses. So are there any other comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adding the one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the demolition of Brentwood indicate by saying aye? Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. Are there any other adjustments that we are looking to make to the capital improvement plan as it's been presented by our Planning and Building Committee? Cindy?
The only thing that I wanted to just put out there was, I don't know what we're going to need to do about the high school parking lot. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but, and maybe that's nothing that can be done tonight, but if there's any safety concerns we have about that parking lot and lighting, which I do, but collectively, we'll want to look at where we want to put that on this capital improvement plan. So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that based on the last meeting.
And a couple of recaps I would say is, I think there's some short term and some long term we discussed. So, short term being, we are looking at relining the lot in the budget. And with the relining, if we can have Keith Nordstrom take a look at the layout, because he's found, you know, he's found magic in, in design to add spaces at, at three of our campuses already. So what can he do in the short term and in the long term? That's where that campus redesign plan will come up with what I'll call long-term strategy. So that's what we came up with in the very short term, but it wasn't, you know, I think with the campus redesign, that's when the lighting and everything else will fold in because it will be cohesive and not fix to break to fix again. I think that's kind of the recap. Did I miss anything?
No, no, exactly. You're exactly right. So the idea was to try to come up with a short-term solution with what we've got. But knowing that the campus redesign is going to address not only the building's situation, but parking and in particular lighting. And, and I think Matt and Tom talked about the, the lighting that we have at the elementary school, Reece Ferry, that was just, or, no, Master Cola, that was just redone. So that would be part of the plan. The other thing too is that we sort of have to be pragmatic about waiting for the work to be done at the highway too, because it's all going to be happening around the same time with the, with the wall that's going to be done for the widening and things like that. So putting that all together as part of the redesign plan, I think is right, but we did address some of the short-term stuff.
Cindy?
I'm just asking, does it make sense to put an asterisk somewhere that, you know, just so that if anyone's looking at it, that, you know, there's this potential campus redesign or something that needs to be fit in? Or, because, I mean, that's a pretty big thing that we're looking at going forward, with trying to put on this, I mean, the whole SAU building. I mean, is it worth making some kind of a notation that basically said that we're under, we're in the process of investigating and pulling together a plan for the entire campus, which would include X, Y, and Z?
I think that could possibly be done, and I'm really reaching here, but I think we have the master plan study slash redesign budgeted for a hundred thousand for two thousand twenty, twenty-two one. I think if we could link off of that to a presentation that we got, and I know it was very rough, but just kind of, you know, if we can even do a simple PowerPoint to, you know, what, what we're looking to do with that based on the meeting we had. So whether it be the minutes from that, whether it be just notes from that, just to kind of show what that means and just link off of it to maybe a landing page, that, again, I'm reaching here because, again, it's not my work, my work to do, it's going to be yours, so. And if it can be done easily, then I think we should do something to that effect.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want, look if there are parents that, you know, are watching this, and I know some of them are, that they understand kind of what we're looking at as we go forward.
Absolutely.
So I just, it leaves it very vague with master plan study, so maybe we just, with the link, that will help.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So are there any other changes we want to make to the capital improvement plan? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those that approve the capital improvement, actually, we have to take a motion to it, my, my apologies. But then we'd like to move that we accept the capital improvement plan as amended. Made by Cindy, seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. We are on to item number four, which is District Technology Plan, Stage One, and I invite to the table Nancy Rose, who's the Director of Techno, Technology and Media Services? Technology, they're all in there somewhere, but I will let you present your title because I've gotten it wrong about eighty-five percent of the time.
I haven't added up the letters, but I think it's officially shorter than John's.
Oh, excellent.
So, good evening. So, I'm here tonight to talk about, I know that there was an interest in having a more formal tech plan than just the CIP, which is what we've really been operating from for the last five years, I think. And so Mark and I had a discussion about how to frame where we've been and where we're going. So I think if we looked at the tech plan being sort of what we've been able to do to date and then going forward, I'd like to just sort of frame that because it sort of lays the groundwork for the coming budget that's in the process of being built now, as well as what we might be thinking about moving forward based on some planning processes. So, the, the first part was really focusing on building an infrastructure that supports the adequate needs of the twenty-first century learner. We really didn't start this work until I had been here maybe two or three years. I've been here now ten. And I started in two thousand nine, so we're twenty years into the twenty-first century. So it's a, it's a little bit of a misnomer in a way, but it is what we've been able to accomplish. And I feel like we've done a lot through the work of the board, the support from the community and what we've been able to do with just pulling together resources to make sure that we went from no budget for technology to what we have in place now. So I just want to be thankful for that and to recognize what an accomplishment that is because I know how challenging it can be. So what we're looking at for this year, that will be coming forward in the budget this year, is really kind of ongoing work that we've been doing to date, and that's maintaining our current infrastructure, trying to maintain the replacement cycle, which we've reduced from about fourteen to like thirteen, fourteen years on a computer to about seven. Laptops are in the five to six-year range, but we tend to still want to have more devices, especially for students. So one of my challenges is to convince people to not keep really old laptops. So that's kind of an ongoing challenge. We are also honoring several license agreements, and I'll explain that a little bit more. We've been working on improving our back, infrastructure, backups and how we do that over the internet and also updating that hardware. And that's actually something that was on a three-year renewal, and that, that renewal is up in this budget. But we're also looking at what we want to do, if we want to renew what we have, or if we want to look into something else and move forward with that. We did a major integration or a co-termination of our licensing for the wireless access points. So as you may remember, we built wireless up over time over the different locations, kind of as we could afford to do it. And so, three years ago, I did a big project with our reseller to sort of consolidate all those licenses because we kept getting renewals like every two months, and it was very annoying. And so we did a major three-year license renewal, and that renewal is up. And probably we can adjust it, but at the same time, it's a big chunk that we're going to be looking at because of the way that it kind of landed. It landed at a different time in the fiscal year from when the backup went through. So it wasn't just, I wasn't like really looking at like, in three years, this is going to happen this way. So it's just kind of a coincidence. We're researching now, upgrading our firewall and the licensing that goes with that. And also we're adding a second internet connection at the middle school, which will complete a six-year, has this been? So this is a, a six-year project that we've been working on with First Light, our internet and phone vendor, to build fiber out to the ferry schools, and then this third leg will, or this last leg, it's three years, will build it out to the middle school. So the district will actually have fiber connectivity between all of the schools and buildings, which was a goal when I got here. It was something that we had talked about wanting to do.
That was probably a goal five or six years before you got here, but never really happened.
It's why I came.
That's why you came.
And, and so we're, we're working on that, but to, to take advantage of that second redundant service, we have to put in additional hardware to support that. We are also continuing with looking at systems in support of data security, the backend for that, and maintaining systems to take care of student privacy and to track websites and licensing, single sign-on and things like that. And then, just also trying to keep, I think I mentioned this earlier, but to try to keep our device replacement on somewhat of a reasonable replacement cycle, because whenever we reduce the number that we get, that actually just pushes out the life of machines. And when, at one point, we, we had a very, very, we didn't really have a replacement cycle. We just had really old computers and we replaced where we were most desperate. Now that we have a lot of student devices, we're at about two to three students per device, depending on what building you're in, or in like the high school, depending on the department. And we don't want to fall backwards on that, I guess, is, is the thing. So the demand is not going down. So that's kind of another area in the budget to, to be working on. So that's what we're looking at coming up this year. And I just wanted to sort of do a quick run-through, and I'll try to not be too tedious about it, but I think it's interesting to look at what we've been able to do in ten years. And it might be something that you all. And it might be something that you all know, but it might be information because not everybody has been here. We have a lot of changeover and a lot of new people in the, in the community who may not understand how we are, where we are. So to just kind of do a quick rundown, we've been able to reduce the lifecycle of computers. The bandwidth from the elementary schools was at 2.4 meg when I arrived, and 4.0 meg at the middle school to the high school. And we're now at 500 meg coming from the ferries, a gig between the middle and high school, and we're going to go to a two, two-gig connection for the district. So just internet alone has kind of, I can't even do the math to compute that. We've added devices for students, or I just consider them mobile devices, because it's a range of tablets and laptops. And we're roughly in the, the two to three device, students per device range, which is, I think, pretty good considering we've been doing it and adding incrementally as we go along. Some of it's been just putting devices in the schools. Some of it's been targeted by different programmatic additions, like specifically supporting a department at the high school, requests made specifically at the different schools. We've been able to provide devices that are commensurate to the needs of the learner. So we have iPads, um, pretty widely available in the K1 range. And for two, grades two through four, we have a, a mix of Chromebooks and laptops. And then through, fifth through the high school, we've got a mix of Chromebooks and laptops. And what's kind of interesting is because we have that theme and variation, what we've been able to do is really look at what device does what task, what's appropriate, what's the best fit. So, for example, you may recall this last year, the math department requested a cart of laptops, specifically because they wanted something with more functionality than what a Chromebook can do, because you can't do anything with installed software. So I feel like rather than taking one device and throwing it across the entire population, we've been able to benefit from that. We now have access to a wide range of online services. We have Office 365, Google Apps, Power School Learning. We have the, um, student information system. We have a single sign-on system. And then a lot of different, uh, curricular supports, research supports. So those are all the things that land in the software budget. But it's a wide range of things that are available. It covers a lot. It's kind of a, a strange account because it covers so much, but it covers a wide range of functionalities that I feel like, I feel good that we've been able to do. We've upgraded the cabling to CAT six completely at three schools and partially for the last three, and are working on it kind of as we go through either the access point installs for wireless or as we do projects. So we're continuing to chip away at that, but, um, that's, there was some pretty old wire doing very long runs, which impacts service. So there were some, some big problems there. We have wireless throughout all of the schools. We are, I think we're at almost one device per instructional space, access point. So that the saturation is, is up there. Every instructional space, except for things that haven't been defined yet as such. So every now and again, they'll do a shift and say, oh, now we need a projector in this room. But they all have projectors and some kind of sound. Working with student supports over the last several years, we've been able to install sound field systems in a lot of classrooms and continue to do that work, which is a, a really nice tie-in with the work with universal design, because that supports every learner. And then also based on what teachers or what's going on programmatically, we have interactivity, whether it's through teachbars or document cameras or iPads or with IT, Apple TVs. So we have a range of ways that teachers are able to make the instruction, uh, more engaging. We went from seven phone systems to a single voice-over IP system that we now manage in-house. And I mentioned the, the second internet connection. We've been able to do a pretty thorough overhaul of our core server switches, routers. We've updated our switches all over the district to a gigabit. So our, our infrastructure to support where we're headed is really falling into place. And I guess that's the, the point to make. And then we're continuing to look at improving our, our, our content filtering, our ability to really monitor closely asset management. Kind of the boring behind-the-scenes stuff that makes life a lot better for us in the tech department and in supporting the schools and operations. We've been able to support STEAM and Maker Ed in a couple of different ways, through both the CIP, as well as through support from the trustees and from some robotics grants from, um, Title IV funds. So we have a library of robots and Maker Ed kinds of technologies that travel all over the district and get used quite heavily. Four libraries have been renovated in the time since I've been here, which was in support of the operational budget and the trustees. And then we also have been able to upgrade AV systems at the Smith Gym and at Muse. The APR Sound was updated through the support of the trustees and parent groups, but then we're also looking at whether or not we can do more work to support the lowest elementary schools with, um, their AV rooms. So we're working on that now, which would be another project with the trustees potentially. So a lot has happened. And so that kind of lays our groundwork that's really moving us forward, where we're improving instructional space, we're improving that infrastructure, we're creating a capacity to move forward. So that as we go forward into a strategic planning process, we can really look at creating the environment where we can identify what are the instructional tools that can be aligned to meet the needs as we go forward, especially for universal design. I really am a big believer that if we can identify that there's something that's good for some students who have a need, it's likely good for more than just those few that are identified. What's good for one might be good for all. And I'd like to be able to plan in a way that we move forward in a way that supports every learner based on what their need is at any given time, not just through an extended process. And I think that this planning, where the technology is aligned with strategic planning, we can really look across the board at our systems, our information systems, our data systems, and everything that we do to improve operations and move us forward so that we can be innovative and we are not burdened by out-of-date processes and workflows and can, can really kind of be a little bit more, um, agile in how we move forward. And then I think things to be looking for going forward is just the continued upgrade in addition of core, core environment. I think something to consider is as we've been able to do so much, we did it over a period of time in kind of a lockstep way, because we didn't want any one building to wait five years. But now that we have like, say, wireless saturation, as we go forward and need to replace those access points in that infrastructure, it may be worthwhile to look at how we can do it, maybe a building or a couple of buildings at a time, as opposed to a little bit in every building over time. Because the advantage is that we had wireless everywhere, kind of moving up at the same rate as far as access. But it has created a situation where we have different models of access points, and it creates kind of a management and compatibility, um, headache. And takes time out of our network manager to sort of stay on top of that and keep that going. So that kind of ability to say, through the strategic planning process, we believe that this is the next big thing that we need to focus on. And it may be that it's a fairly big investment, but this is what it will get us towards the goals across the district, might be something that we want to be thinking about so that it's less, how do we get caught up and more, how do we be proactive and move things forward in a more, um, holistically designed way? So that's really kind of, I wanted to sort of lay the groundwork of what's this year, what we've achieved and what it might look like to be proactively budgeting for technology going forward in support of what it is that we might be doing in the planning process.
Absolutely. Mark?
So, uh, you've heard Nancy several times tonight, uh, use the term strategic plan, and that's not a term that we've used much. And I'm going to just forecast for you that, um, the, the parallel to that, which is a term you've heard more, more, uh, frequently is logic model. And, um, so we, we don't have a big announcement tonight about that. But what I want, um, the board to know is that, um, the, the, um, systems leaders, that is the, uh, Matt, John and I, Nancy, Heather Barker, the Director of Student Services, and the district leadership team have all been working on, um, uh, considering sort of morphing from a logic model approach to planning, to a strategic plan. There's quite a bit of difference between the two. We'll have more to say about that to the board in the new year. But I think that at the moment, it seems to be the right direction for us to go. And, you know, everything, you know, everything that we've done in the past is, um, helpful to how we move forward. But, uh, we're kind of of a, a mind that the logic model, as it has been developed and utilized, and you'll have referenced this year, um, in the budget, but has perhaps run its course and that there's going to be a new way to approach, uh, things. And so, um, we have on the, uh, in the agenda tonight, district technology plan, stage one. That's as Nancy described, the, the creation of an infrastructure to allow us to now be, uh, pursuing, uh, a more, um, aggressive vision for our use of technology. But that couldn't happen until we had a, a wherewithal to do that. And so that was kind of stage one. You will hear us come back to you talking about stage two, um, later on. And at that point, it's going to be really much more wedded to the idea of an emerging strategic plan, which of course will happen in conjunction with the board. I mean, we're not going to do this in the absence of the board's, um, you know, heavy contribution. But I'm just forecasting for you all tonight, kind of for the first time, we are forecasting sort of a movement, uh, in that direction. So if you, if you wondered, if you replayed, did she say strategic plan? And I didn't hear a logic model much, that, that, that's intentional, and it's kind of laying the groundwork for what you'll hear more about, um, in the new year.
Are there any questions on what's been presented so far tonight? So Naomi?
Not a question, more appreciation. I think that, um, a lot of what you do for most people is incredibly behind-the-scenes. Technology is like that in general, but it's really nice to have a summary of all the bits and pieces that have been going on in one place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy?
And, you know, it's been great to see this happen over the last number of years. I think I've been involved either in the budget process or the school board for nine years. And so it's absolutely kind of neat to see it recapped, um, and to kind of get that perspective. But I do have a question. One of the things that I've been hearing more and more from parents is about what kind of computer, I want to get my child a computer. My child's going into middle school. My child's going into high school. I want a computer for them. What would be most compatible? What would? And so, you know, I'm wondering if, you know, there's a, some input we can give to parents that want to take their own resources to help their student, um, best align, uh, with their educational goals. That's one thing, right? And then there's, how do we deal with then everybody else? But it's, we know kids are bringing their computers. We know they're doing that. And if parents want to do that, uh, for their children, then do we have any advice for them? A. And then B, if that is the case, if we, we do have some recommendations, albeit a Chromebook, for example, would we be able to secure some pricing that we might be able to pass on to parents? So rather than going to Best Buy and buying the Chromebook, do we have a link where they could purchase something that might be less expensive than if they went to Best Buy to get a Chromebook? Or whatever, um, whatever, you know, laptop might be most compatible?
Okay. So I think it's going to depend on kind of the need. One of the, um, so a Chromebook is a very inexpensive way to get access to some functionality. You have to have Wi-Fi. But it is a way to do that. And so I, I think it would depend on what the situation is or the desire to, to meet. So if, and I'm just thinking of somebody who may not have a lot of money to invest in a device, but if they were to get an inexpensive Chromebook and had wireless access, that they could then do a lot. But then when they need more functionality, they could come in and use a computer, a, a Windows machine at school that would give them that extra functionality. The flip side is if they want to invest a little bit more and get a Windows device that has more functionality, more capability, you kind of can't go wrong with a lot of like the major brands. But I have not yet looked into setting up pricing. Frequently when districts do that arrangement, it's through some kind of a program where a vendor is expecting a certain volume of, of purchase. So if we were to try to line up pricing, uh, it would be a challenge to do that with not a sen, sense of what the volume would be. But I could look into what the educational discounts are that would be available for students or for families who are buying for students, and to see if there's any way to leverage that. And we could put that out, uh, through different ways of communicating, if, if we can get that set up. But I do, I think that that's how some districts have supported having student devices. But yeah. Does that answer the question? Because it's, like, right now, it really depends on what you're trying to achieve, which device you have. And like, one device will do eighty percent of what you need. So if you don't get that last twenty, you could get it in the district, or you could buy one that does everything, but it's more.
I think Mark also has something to answer that.
Actually, I'm going to ask Nancy if she could just elaborate. So Cindy, your question, um, your question really touches on, on something pretty central that Nancy's been working on actually for a long time. And so I'll, I'll ask Nancy to speak a little bit more about it. But essentially, uh, one of the things that, that Nancy has really, uh, helped our educators and our, um, uh, building leaders to think about is, um, technology can be the right tool, um, for a given challenge, or it might not be the right tool. Sometimes something much less complex, or we might redefine what we term technology. Maybe for a particular student and a particular environment, a pencil is the right technology. And so I think that one of the things that we've been working on, and here I said I'm going to ask Nancy to say it, and I'm saying, but I mean, you can elaborate. But one of the things we've been working on with our teachers is not to just automatically assume that, um, that, you know, a computer will be the thing that they need to do to solve their problems. It's really asking, well, what is the challenge you're looking for? What is the, rather, what is the challenge that you find yourself in, and then matching that with the tool? So maybe I've said it exactly what you, okay? But I mean, I just think it's important because I, even though I've said it, you have really led that charge to raise the consciousness of people to think about that. So I would say the parallel would be for parents as well. What is the reason that you want technology? Answer that question first, and that would determine potentially your use or your purchase or...
I mean, so what I would say would be some basic things, right? What I've experienced in my experiences, um, is kids are writing papers. They're writing assignments that they're going to submit or email to their teachers, whether than handing, printing it out and handing it in like they used to. You know, that's a very common thing that's happening now. So, I mean, there's some basic things like that, that, you know, kids, you know, want to do and parents want to support. And I, you know, then what's the answer?
Right.
So that, that's just, you know...
It kind of still goes back to that though, because like with a Google, with a Chromebook, you can do almost everything in writing. I think where you run into more limits is when you want to do more specific formatting and things like that. So a student would not be poorly served with a Chromebook if that's what was a good fit, if it was an easy way to get whatever, you know, the technology that would move them forward or have them have something at home. But, um, I think the, um, the other, you know, we have invested in online, um, math programs. We have invested in text. So there's research. There's a lot of different elements. And teachers are moving in that direction more and more. So I think that there's no question that having access to, to technology is becoming more and more common. I also am very cognizant of concern about screen time and constant use on devices. And, um, you know, that there's a balance to strike there. And also being very mindful, kind of going back to Mark's point, is that we're not finding that we're just using technology to do the thing that we always did, which is replicating like a worksheet or something that isn't terribly meaningful with a device. So it doesn't really, I mean, it's going back to your question. I think, you know, students who have Chromebooks can be served by a Chromebook. If they have a laptop, the laptop works. It's just a limited functionality. And I would not want somebody to come away from hearing me tonight say, well, if I don't get a Chromebook, they're not going to be well-served, because they would be largely well-served. But they might want more functionality, which they may not want to have to get at school or wait until they can access a parent's device. Because I know that's one of the challenges that, um, the students that did the research for me last year for, um, the, uh, for the one-to-one research, you know, there were homes that had technology, but they had maybe one computer and three kids in school who are kind of competing for that one resource. So that, you know, if I have three kids, I might rather buy a couple of Chromebooks as opposed to three Windows laptops. So that's why I'm a little loathe to say, get this one thing, because it would really depend on the circumstances of the household. If we were to move forward with an initiative to settle on a device to be used as a programmatic choice, going back to the point with Mark, um, regarding planning, then it would be, this is what has been divi, um, decided on based on curricular, instructional and cohesive planning programmatic needs, which is where I would like to see technology planning go. And bearing in mind, and I wanted to apologize, my last job was the strategic planner. That's what I did. And so for me, this is really what we're doing, is aligning technology to what we're identifying as the next way to do business in the district. And I'm really excited about universal design because of what I think it will do to support how we design learning environments. And technology is a big part of that, but it's not all of it. And technology is a big part of that, but it's not all of it. But once we get to that point, we could be talking about, here's the device, how do we go about making sure that everybody has access to that device? So, long-winded, but to me, it's all integrated.
So, I don't know if that really gives me any answers, but that's okay. But it might be a good option when we do like orientation for freshman parents.
Are you looking for like a make and a model?
No, I mean, I'm just, as a parent, I'm going to say, what do I need to do to, what do I need to do to get my child to support it at school? You know, with technology? Go ahead.
Okay.
So what I was thinking, so when I had kids that started getting ready to go to college, because they were in music, they didn't invest in a Windows laptop, they wanted to invest in a Apple MacBook, right? Because in music, there's a lot more applications in there, right? So what it brought forward is looking to the district or teachers or class, what, how you could get to what you needed depending on the kind of device you had. So if you had a Chromebook, this is what you'd need to do. If you had a Windows laptop, this is what you'd need and maybe what the minimum needs to be. If you had a MacBook, this is what you would need to get in. Maybe those sort of guidelines, depending on the device, would help not only to provide information if they had a device, but also if they're looking at a device, the sort of things that they would need, sort of criteria. Even if you didn't offer to buy them one, you'd give them sort of the entry-level stuff that they would need should they have a device to get.
And I go into that point, I think one of the beauties of where we are right now with technology is you could buy a Mac and be well-served by it, because we're an Office 365 and a Google District, that's all served by the web. You can install Office on a Mac. So like, all of those things would still work. We do a few classes at the high school that use Adobe Creative Suite, but those go both ways. But pretty much everything is accessed via the web. It really comes down to what a preference would be for how you operate. And devices that come from outside right now don't have access to our network infrastructure, like the actual network drives directly. Students can access those drives via ClassLink, but that's creating a secure barrier, and it's more of a web-based access to those things. So in a way, the platform doesn't really matter a whole lot. So it really does kind of come down to if a web-based word processing and spreadsheet functionality is going to be sufficient, a Chromebook would work. If you want, like if you have students going into calculus and things at the higher level, like a lot of high schools are leaning towards Windows laptops, the range can be from a couple hundred bucks up to six, $7,000. And right, you know, what I would hate to say is to only go to a $200 device if you're planning on your kid using it for the next five years through college. So again, kind of leaning towards, depending on what your goals are, you could, you could invest appropriately, but you know, until we're ready as a district to say what it is that we're doing programmatically...
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
It makes total sense.
Yeah, so it's, but yeah, really, I mean, any device at this point, I would just assume that they should have a keyboard.
Yeah.
You know, like an iPad probably wouldn't be the best solution for a high school at this point, so.
Okay. I mean, I would just raise the awareness too, that parents are asking and that it's a, we're all participating collectively, the district, the community, the parents, the students, and their learning. So I would just raise that as a thought, you know, as we go forward.
Well, and even looking at what it is that you can do with the different ways that learning is accessed in the district, these different devices will do that, would be one way to do that, rather than this device will meet these needs. These are the needs that you can meet these ways, to leave that a little bit more open.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
Okay. Naomi, so I just had kind of a follow-on thought to that, because I know that the one thing we always get is a catalog of study when you go into high school, and I think even middle school has a bit of it. But, you know, where you can go into the different courses, and maybe at the end, just have like icons, so compatible, you know, the course, the supplemental course content compatible with Chrome, compatible with Windows, compatible with Mac. So there are things that aren't. So that way, you were saying some things like the math programs require a Windows device.
That's what the math department uses in the building.
But the thing is, like, if a student brought their own Windows device, they couldn't use that, that technology? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, they could.
Right, so that's what I'm saying.
Well, it would depend. So we license specific software for that set of 30 laptops.
Okay.
So that would be a question of if we, and this goes back to the planning side, if it's decided as we move forward with instruction and curriculum that to best teach math at the high school, every student needs a laptop that has access to the Texas Instrument Emulators, like all of the different things that could be that, that's what we would be working on designing, and we're not there yet.
Okay.
So they're asking for equipment to have to use in the district, and that's what we can do the licensing for. But we don't yet have an environment where a student can come in and get access to things that we license for installation. But they have access to all of the web-based things that we have, as long as we have the seats to accommodate that, if that makes sense.
It does.
Like 365, everybody can use that everywhere.
Yeah, it's just one of those kind of things, when you're in a classroom, you're trying to practice at home, you can't practice at home if you don't have the same tools that the classroom has. So that's what I was looking to say, would there be something where you could extend those same technologies to home? And if so, does, you know, are those technologies available on these platforms?
That's what we would be building.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. So are there any other questions or comments on that? Brandy, sure.
I would just not limit it to the high school only, because I have not yet reached the high school, but I know that several, two of mine, as well as several of their friends, are accessing Office 365 and using, like even my computer, my son's on it tonight. So it's not just a high school.
Oh, not by any stretch.
So just not, as far as that orientation piece that you were referencing, and I think that would be helpful for even Jamie's level kids.
I agree, I absolutely do.
Well, and we have laptops, we have Windows laptops and Chromebooks at the elementary levels, primarily used by third and fourth graders. So I wasn't trying to limit, it was just an example where there was a department that identified, based on what they're doing, what they wanted to have access to in the district. But I just, I can't emphasize enough that part of what I like about universal design is that as we go forward and do planning, it would be in consideration of what is needed to have available in every classroom, and if it's a device that we provide that goes home, or a device that the family provides that goes back and forth, needs to have these capabilities. We just don't know all of that yet, because that's what we have not been able to do yet.
Okay.
So.
More to come.
Yeah.
There you go. Go ahead.
So that's, that's the point, and I think that what Cindy's question actually raises is exactly sort of the reason that we're going to be coming back to the Board and the community relatively soon with Stage Two. Because you, that, that question that you raise about providing information to families about maximizing opportunities and, and recommendations for tools, that actually wouldn't even be a question that you could have asked a few years ago, because there would have had been no basis to even kind of address it. So the good news is that we, we do now have, through the support of the Board and the community over years, the ability to have that question make sense now. And that's really the next point. So, so now, moving on to Stage Two, strategic planning, and then being able to incorporate the voices of the Board as representatives of the community and members of the community, you know, that will become the building blocks for what now would be, we're just loosely calling Stage Two of a District Technology Plan. But your question actually sort of sets the stage for that, and I just don't want to lose the moment to say that you couldn't have asked that question had it made any sense at all a couple of years ago, so.
So with that, I believe there's more to come, and if not, we thank you so much for kind of laying the groundwork on where it's going.
Thanks for letting me come.
Absolutely. So you talked about UDL, so talk about the setter and the spiker, because we do have a volleyball player amongst us on the Board.
Well, and I actually, I think that's, that's the other voice that's part of this equation, is the student voice. And what does a student think of what would be the most supportive, what would be the most beneficial? And I have heard from students, you know, what it is that, you know, they dream and aspire to, but also when it gets down to it, what do they really want? What's the most needed thing? So I think that's an important part of the dialogue to come.
Awesome.
So.
Thank you much. And we are going on to item number five, which is Universal Design for Learning Update with John.
So as I'm setting up, I just want to, again, thank Nancy Rose for her partnership over the years with the work we've done around, she mentioned some of the work around assistive technology, and that was off of a grant that we were involved in with New Hampshire, State of New Hampshire, New Hampshire AT Project. And it really helped us do the training that we needed to put in some sound field systems in a lot of our classrooms. And it was really with her partnership that we figured out how to do that, because it may sound simple, but when you have projectors with speakers, sound field systems with speakers, announcement speakers, all in the same room, and students with hearing loss wearing hearing aids, the feedback on that can be pretty amazing when that all happens all at once to a child. So Nancy and her partnership really helped us figure that out. And it's been a very good, very good install over the years, so it's, it's been good. Sorry.
I hear it running. Yeah, it was making a noise before. Yeah, I'm seeing some glow.
So thank you, and good evening again. I've moved seats a little bit to be able to present from here today, because I have a little bit of a presentation to talk about where we are now that we are moving into mid-November, and then right before the holiday, before you know it, we'll be at the beginning of the year, the next new year. And we've been doing some, some work as a team, and, and teams, again, and I wanted to just give an update, or call it some of the detail of where we are. Some of this you may say, well, we heard this from Bill's presentation, or from our middle school when they presented. And yes, you did, and I've given some presentations along the way, but I wanted to put it together to say, here we are in November, we've been working together, and we continue to, as Nancy said, put things together that's including our curriculum, our technology, and our teaching and our learning. And I wanted to take an opportunity to kind of talk about why universal design for learning tonight, and show a little video, a little bit of it to show, using where Bill Wilmot will walk us through kind of where we are at this stage in the year. So again, why universal design for learning? It's because we've talked about it, kids come in all different kinds of packages when they're in our classrooms. They have all kinds of needs, all kinds of cultural backgrounds, all kinds of abilities, all kinds of different attention spans, all kinds of dedication in learning, and all kinds of, all kinds of abilities. And we want to make sure that we reach all of those in the classroom. So, universal design for learning. So I'm going to just quickly, pardon me. See, it's going to do this. I knew it wasn't going to work. Presentation mode.
So while John is doing that, you know, we've, we've really dedicated ourselves to universal design for learning for a reason. You know, we've tried to say to the Board and the community for a long time now that we were not, you know, we're not just ever satisfied with status quo. We really are trying to constantly think about new ways to approach our practice. And, and, and this is probably one of the biggest things that we've done in a long time. And so we started at August Academy, and we've promised the Board periodic updates on what we're doing, because we're not letting this go. And we think it's important that the Board and the community kind of are along the ride with us, because, because this is so significant. And so as John pointed out, some of the things that you've, you're going to hear tonight, you've heard before, but, you know, Marge Chaffrey sometimes used to say, you know, seven times, seven times before, you know, people really remember, you know, what we've said. And, and so we want everybody to really commit with us to this journey. And also, that in addition to reminding the Board and the community about things that we've done, in the space between times that we report to you, new things happen. And so John's going to be talking about some of those new things tonight, and hopefully there'll be a video to support that, and if there isn't, we can still verbalize what that is, because teams of teachers, as John is going to speak about in a few minutes, really have been doing a lot of work. In addition to their time teaching, they have spent time learning about teaching better. And so, and so that's the purpose for the update tonight. It's not a curriculum update, that'll come soon, but it might as well be, because this is as central to our work as anything we've done.
So I'm going to go back on, and I apologize for this, it's working on my computer but not up there, so we're going to keep moving on. So what Bill is going to talk about is kind of, we're, we just got through really, and Nancy talked, talked about the first phases of technology. And I think that we are in the same place right now with where we are with our phases of UDL. And I apologize, okay? So in our phases of UDL, and what has happened so far, where we are. So as we talked about earlier in the year, we established seventeen, we had seven teams in the district. Two of them started last year, the upper elementary school and the middle school. Then we joined this year from our high school, and our three elementary schools have joined along. And along with that, a district team. And in our district team, I'll talk about in a little, little while, but we've been able to kind of meet together and guide and make some decisions collectively. It's a new structure for us. So we're, we're focusing on universal design for learning as an entire district right now, all the way from preschool through 12th grade. And what happens is each team is led by a facilitator, and I lead the district team myself. We establish meetings, and we have agendas each for facilitators, we reserve space to make sure that we have space available, and we set instructional goals for each meeting. In each meeting, and that was Bill was going to talk about, how we're setting our instructional goals, we're, we're able to set goals that say, okay, what do we want to focus on as a team as we move forward? And why UDL now? What's happening in our classrooms? Where are the student ownership? Where is the, where is the fact of that release of gradual release of responsibility towards a student, so they're owning their own learning? And we're doing some of that and talking about it. So our teams have met for six hours already, just in meeting time this year. Beyond that, they've attended a two-day training through CAST, where we learned more about a deeper dive into what I provided the Board with, the UDL rubric and the UDL look at what an exception, what an expert learner is. And we took a real deep dive into that to say, what does that mean? How does that focus our instructional practice as a district? In doing so, went into something called instructional rounds. And instructional rounds are led by Bill Wilmot, who you've met, came to the Board, and he works as a facilitator. And he sets a schedule for us, and... And he works as a facilitator. And he sets a schedule for us and for classroom visits. And teams of educators observe each other in classrooms. This isn't part of our EPEC model. It isn't part of anything to do with evaluation. It's them going into the class for 15 minutes and looking at instructional practices and comparing it to our UDL framework and allowing us to be able to say, where does this meet the needs of our students and then have an opportunity to come back and talk about it. After we do our visits, we come together and we collect that data. And we use, it's called instructional rounds practice sheet, and I'll show you that in a second. And it focuses on student choices regarding products, tools, methods, learning, routines in the classrooms. What is a teacher offering? Is it just one teacher speaking in front of the whole class? Or is there opportunities for group work, for learning? And we record all that. We look at that. And then we compare that to the framework. And there's a lot of post-its that come out of this. And the post-its are generated after that. Then Bill debriefs for the team. And he looks at all of them and he says, alright, what did we observe? Alright, compiles the data and shares that info at staff meetings. They share out what they saw from each other. So we're trying as we do this, as we're goal-setting, we're building in our instructional teams in each building to also inform our other staff. And that's the hard part because it's smaller groups working between 10 and 15 educators now getting out to our whole staff. So we've begun to do that work. It's just a copy of the instructional round sheet. So you can imagine you go in with clipboards, multiple teachers, sometimes five, six, or seven educators in the classroom. We'll go into one classroom. We'll talk to kids. We'll walk around. We'll say, so what are you learning today? Seeing if they know their instructional goals. And we'll look at that. And we'll collect data based on what's going and then we'll transfer all this data to those post-its, as I said, when the day is done. So after we did that, we've done that in our six buildings. It came time to say, okay, now as a leadership team, it's our turn to do an instructional round. And without many of us having classrooms, we kind of had to think about, alright creatively, how can we be effective here? And again, as Bill said when he was here, we're one of the few districts around that the entire district is doing this. So we're creating the model in some ways and we're working together to say what's best for us in Merrimack here. So we took all those post-its, the six-member team, the six principals, myself, Nancy, Heather, and Mark, and sat together and spent the whole day, we can go, last Tuesday actually. And we gathered all those post-its from all the schools. There was hundreds of them. And we laid them out based on engagement, representation, and action and expression. And we put them into those separate categories. Then we further, based on the UDL model, broke them down even more. And we looked at, what patterns are we seeing? What did the teams notice when they were in their schools? Does it compare? And what feedback going forward will inform our practice? This was, I think, Mark and I had a lot of conversation after this too. And we said, this was probably the first time that we've taken a big scope and started looking at instructional practice as a district. And it was very powerful to say, where are we right now? And what are some things we're doing really, really well? What are some areas that we can see we need to improve? And that's gonna help us set our instructional goals for our UDL teams as we move forward. Are we making progress as we go along? And we're starting to do that work together right now. So next steps.
John, can I just interrupt for one second before you get to next steps? So I just, because I was so happy to be a part of this. It was fascinating. So just to give you an example, when John was talking about patterns, if you could just, John, go back to the previous slide for just a second. So what patterns are we seeing? So there was, for instance, this pattern that we were seeing that a lot of the observers were paying attention to engagement in the classroom. You know, like, were students participating? Were they involved? Were the conditions set for students to engage? And so that was really good and we felt good about that. And then the question then off of that was, okay, so now there's engagement, but what's, let's say, the rigor of the learning? So you can have a lot of people engaged and really into it, but theoretically then you couldn't, you might not necessarily have a high level of rigor. I'm not saying that was the case, but I'm saying, so it's interesting to see where teachers are at the moment. They're really cued in to the idea that you have to try to engage the learner. So that's a good thing. And it was helpful to see that that's what they went into a classroom looking for. And then the next step is, okay, so now after that, let's be sure that the engagement is producing high-level learning. And so these conversations about the patterns then prompts teachers and administrators to talk to and work with each other to then say, it's good that we've got engagement going on now. What are we doing about that? Those other components. And then maybe it would be, well, maybe not as much as we should. Okay, well, what does that look like? And, but all of that can only happen when you have the foundation to be able to see what's happening in the classroom. So that's just flesh on the bone about what it actually looks like when you're looking at patterns. And it's really fascinating to see what teachers think is interesting to look at in a classroom. And sometimes, and we saw some teachers were, let's say, commending a teacher for having a strong presence in the classroom. And that's good, but that could be interpreted as I'm standing up here telling you what you need to know. And one of the things that we've learned is that's a strategy that works for some students, but probably not as many as we might think. That would have been a pattern that we would have seen years ago and really applauded years ago. Maybe less so now. So, but you have to create awareness and the first thing is, why are you so into people being a sage on the stage? What does that say about what you think of what teaching and learning is? So all of that is to just kind of put flesh on the bone about what really this means when we start looking at what we're seeing in a classroom. So, sorry, John.
And I think that the given thing here, when we start looking at expert learners, we've came, we've talked about our EPEC model. And we've talked about kind of what a really highly effective educator looks like. And we've had those conversations. And one of the powerful things that's happening during this process is our educators themselves are starting to see in their own instructional practice, okay, well, here's where I am. And here's where I am as an educator. And here are the things I'm doing real well. Well, here's some things that maybe I need my own growth on. And that's coming out from, that's one of those kind of unintended consequences of the work we're doing here. We're starting to create really self-reflective practice as we move forward. And we're seeing that happen. So kind of, now it's not gonna go. Anyhow, next steps. We're gonna talk about next steps. And I think some of our next steps are, we're gonna continue to meet as a UDL team. We have monthly meetings every month. Two hours every month is a big commitment for us to do and we are doing that. And then we move forward and we, as the year progresses, we'll go on to doing another set of instructional rounds this spring. Where we'll kind of say, okay, we've gathered this information. We're setting instructional goals for ourselves. In the spring, we're gonna follow up and say, where are we again? Another benchmark. And then we'll have two more days of training through CAST. And Bill will be out again to visit us and work with our facilitators in every building to move us forward. I think it's, and then we continue the process. This is year one of three for the schools that started this year. It's year two of three for the middle and the upper elementary school. And then throughout the year, my plan is to keep bringing back schools. I think to forecast a little bit, the upper elementary school will be here in December sometime to come talk to you about where they've been, now that they're about a year and a quarter into this, some of the amazing gains they've made and how that expert learner in that UDL model is really part of their culture now in their school. You'll see it in multiple places. When you go into their office area, when you go into the classroom, you're gonna see it displayed more. And it's been grown by that deep dive of learning what this means to be a district involved in UDL. And we're making great progress in where we're going right now. Any questions I can answer?
I see a couple. So start with Naomi.
So one of the wonderful things about initiatives like UDL is, at least from my perspective, that it can be implemented or you could reap wonderful benefits without doing a single larger change in terms of materials or these various pieces that are in place. But you can take a system that exists and improve it dramatically without working on those other external pieces. But it does affect those. And so I'm curious whether you've begun to get a sense, and it may be too early for this, of what systems level changes might be needed to better support UDL in terms of, oh, we're pretty decent on classroom size, but that kind of thing comes to mind. Technology we talked about tonight, the variety of things that one ends up looking at and saying, are these a match for UDL? Do you get any sense of that yet?
Yep. I think that, so everything has a time and a place and when you're ready for it. And I think that, I've talked to Mark often about this. We were a district that was involved in RTI a long time ago. And, you know, it was when I was the principal at MES. We really brought in a lot of RTI initiatives then. It was time for us to look at kind of, how do we respond to those kids that aren't necessarily, they're not necessarily high in need in the world of special ed, but they're not necessarily high achievers. They're somewhere in the middle. And we found that at that time, it was interesting that we did a lot of work to try to help those kids that felt like, you know, if it was in that two, three range on a four-point scale, right in that middle. And we did that. And it was a great timing for that for us then. Well, I would say we're facing that right now. We're timing. Our infrastructure's in a very good place for technology. I think our curriculums have been under review. They continue to be under review. And we're looking at that. I think that our leadership team is on board here. And I think they're not only active participants on their school-based teams, but they're also coming together for another, so it's two hours in the school-based team, the training with the school-based team, and then additional with the leadership team. So I think that what's affecting so far has been very positive in a lot of ways. It's affected that kind of coming together for common person, common goals. Because, you know, that little bit of a stronger together than we are trying to do this in separate parts. That's a very positive outcome of it. I think the outcomes that are difficult, I think, and we're not there yet, like you said, are we there yet? No, is that these are six teams of educators in each building than a leadership team. Well, we have a massive, larger staff than that. And that's the challenge in my mind right now about, we can move these six teams pretty readily, pretty fast. A lot of training, a lot of meeting. It's now, how do we continue to find infrastructures that go beyond what we're doing to that mass? That's the difficult part, to make that big change you're talking about.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
I believe, Andy, your hand was up. You're good? Are there any other questions of UDL as it stands today? We know there's more to come. We've been given many promises. There will be. And we look forward to it. So thank you for the continual updates. And it's definitely, you know, I think it resonates in a lot of what we're hearing at meetings as well with our building leaders. And obviously Nancy Rose set you up in a very good way to show how, you know, the technology will take a strong role in that. So.
Thank you.
So thank you. Onto item number six, which is the school board budget message. Again, thank you for your indulgence. I changed laptops. And when I did, I lost the original. So I did use all of your original messages, which by the way, as I've done, has been done every year, is given to administration so they have the context in which the board messages given. And from that, I had what was provided to you in your addendum to your packet. So I'll read that for the record. The overreaching message from the Merrimack School Board for the 2021 budget season falls in three interrelated areas: infrastructure management, student outcomes, and fiscal prudence. Having aging infrastructure, we would like a budget that maintains our buildings so that we're keeping highly functioning facilities that will not put operations in question. We consider recent upgrades to roofing, heating, and electrical infrastructure improvements in portions of the district as examples of items. We want to be sure our management proactively so we can maximize our useful life, keeping in mind that we would need replacement on some items as they are approaching failure. Within this category, we also look at items that would impact student safety and our commitment to having that be a critical part of our mission in operating the school district. We would not be inclined to take our chances on infrastructure items that are in need of maintenance or replacement to get to a bottom line, acknowledging it is nothing more than putting a burden on a future budget with its own needs. We are mindful that all district operations are focused on achieving optimal student outcomes. We are committed to supporting these initiatives such as universal design for learning, commonly referred to as UDL, to give every student instruction that will adapt for their optimal learning, social and social-emotional learning curriculum, and of course, the refinement of curriculum from K to 12 to prepare students for college and career readiness. We know this also includes the need to improve our district's technology to meet the evolving needs of our students and address increased data security protocols. We ask that fiscal prudence be considered at every turn and that all items are presented with detail that shows transparency and design of the budget and a clear correlation to the expenditures' impacts to district operations and student outcomes. Finally, we ask that with the budget, there's also a communication strategy to afford the community the opportunity to provide input, whether in person, in writing, or by phone. We refer little to nothing from our constituents and consistently hold budget hearings in an empty room. Deliberative sessions are becoming the new budget hearing and occur at a point in the process where responsible budget adjustments cannot be accomplished. So with that, I believe our next meeting, budget books are coming?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that, hopefully that provides the guidance to finalize any details. Are there any questions or comments on the board's budget message? Seeing none, we're onto item number seven. We're in housekeeping. Well, the approval of November 4th, 2019 minutes. I'll entertain a motion made by Andy, seconded by Brandy. Are there any adjustments to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstain, one. So the motion carries 401 with Vice Chair Gualyumi abstaining. Onto item number eight, consent agenda with John.
Thank you. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have one item. Approval of the distribution and display of information at school policy.
I'll entertain a motion. Cindy?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Cindy, seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, none. The motion carries 500. Item number nine is other. Part A is correspondence. Any correspondence? Naomi?
I've had some communications with parents regarding some sports transportation. I haven't had a chance yet to communicate them onward, but I will do so.
Thank you, Naomi. Any other correspondence? I received one from a family of a student that wanted to be able to navigate the district hierarchy to address some concerns. So navigate them and guide them properly. Any other correspondence? Seeing none. Comments? Any comments from the board? Seeing none. Any new business? Mark?
So I just wanted to kind of put on the board's radar the thought about scheduling upcoming board budget hearings. So as Chair Barnes mentioned, on December 2nd, be presenting the budget to the board. And following past practice, we have typically used the following board meeting for at least one hearing. I mean, multiple hearings, but in one night. So I'm suggesting that on December 16th, we might have as part of our regularly scheduled board meeting, hearings with the technology, budget, maintenance, and food service. Bearing in mind that that's just before Christmas, moving on to the first budget, first board meeting of the new year is scheduled for January 6th. And on that night, Monday, January 6th, I'm suggesting that we have the three elementary schools and the upper elementary school present. Now, not knowing anything about the board's schedule, this is subject to change, which is why I'm just offering this early. But in keeping with past practice of trying to keep this moving along, suggesting the potential for January 8th, which would be a Wednesday, for a hearing that would include the budget of Merrimack High School, Merrimack Middle School, and the district office. So particularly January, the other two are regularly scheduled board meetings. January 8th is certainly up for discussion. You don't even need to tell me tonight. I just wanted to put it out there. And perhaps on December 2nd, if there would be a thought. Our team is really pretty flexible and ready to accommodate your schedule. But I just would put out there that, just knowing that we need to kind of get that up and running as well.
Cindy?
I'm nearly certain that I have a conflict on the 8th, but I can provide you with more info.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, I think that we usually
Okay, so with that, I think that we usually try to like, have one other board meeting for any, if we have to do any recalls, we keep it open, it's as needed. Um, so the last, we try to also have the final budget exercise so we can push the budget forward to the voters. So with that, if there are dates coming up in December and January between our next, um, our second board meeting of December and the um, I guess.
December, uh, January sixth.
January sixth. If there are any um, dates that are conflict on, and from January sixth on, um, we know January eighth is one. But if there are dates in that week and the week after that um, are not conducive to your schedules, please let us know and that way we can try to have all hands on deck.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, oh, yes, Andy?
As we were looking ahead at dates, it occurred to me that um, to give a heads up to parents in the world that we have in our calendar a floating date for the presidential primary in early February that will need to be closed. Right now, the stake in the ground is what, the eleventh of February, I believe? But that's subject to change. But I'd just like to remind people listening that that date is coming and that it may be the eleventh, but that will be determined by when the Secretary of State does the, the primary, so.
So thank you. I, I'm prepared to um, confirm that at the December second meeting.
Excellent. So if there, if you could just get that back to um, Mark, you can copy me, that'd be great. And that way we can try to finalize the schedule, have it for our next agenda. Um, going on to item number eleven, if there's no other new business, committee reports? Are there any committee reports from the board? Seeing none. Uh, item number twelve, public comments on agenda items? Okay.
Rick Foot, one twenty-nine Indian Rock Road again. Um, two questions for you. The one about the asbestos removal at the Brentwood building. Um, well, if you knock it down or whatever you decide to do with the thing. Were the other two pla- other two houses that started out as the Brent, like the Brent one, one did? The uh, two, two um, office buildings there? I imagine, did those have asbestos problems at one time? The, the green building and the gray one that were, the Brentwood house obviously started out as one of those buildings too, before they added all that stuff onto it over the years. I'm just curious to know if those ever had asbestos issues? Or were the asbestos issues something that came with all the additions to the Brentwood when they built that house into the Brentwood building? Odd questions. And then the other one was with John's thing about this UDL thing. I'm just curious, does that, does that weed out teachers that are not so good? I mean, to put it politely, when I was a kid growing up, it would not be uncommon to hear your parents talking about certain teachers they didn't like too much for various reasons. I'm just curious if nowadays those are still an issue. I have no idea if they are or not. I'm just curious if that is actually still an issue these days or not. So I'm just curious if that's something that, you look at, like I say, you go to a classroom and see how the teacher's doing things and you get down and thinking, oh, wow, that teacher really is kind of uh, needs some improvement there. Maybe this thing helps, suggestions to that teacher, like, hey, you really gotta do things differently?
I, I would say, just to kinda cut you off, I, I, not to cut you off, but to kinda give you clarity, is we're not about weeding out teachers. We're always about evolving and, and building the skills of teachers. And I think that this, this UDL program gives them some, some uh, some structure to be able to, to make the adjustments in the classroom to maximize output.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Um, seeing no other public, I will close public comments on agenda items. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest. And I will, I will entertain a po- motion to go to non-public section per RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, section two, or Roman numeral two sections A, B and C. Made by Naomi, seconded by Andy. Brandy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Naomi?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
Cindy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor, the motion carries five zero zero. Thank you and good night.